All right, we'd like to welcome everybody to the County Commission meeting today. Our invocation is going to be by Rabbi Helene Einbinder from Bates Cheverim. How about you tell us how it's pronounced when you come up? Jewish Community Center and a member of our Interfaith Council.
Right. Shalom. I just got back from Israel and Europe, so a little shit lagged and whatever, fears from flying.
Thank you for being here.
But shalom. Rabbi Helene Einbinder from Bates Cheverim, Jewish community of Greater Zion, and the past president of the St. George Interfaith Council, and now I'm a member of the Utah Committee of the United States Commissioners on Civil Rights. So some other little things. Someone's such a busy? No, okay. So with that, just note that the Interfaith Council prays for all our government officials, our fire department, our police, all the armed forces and their families, that they remain safe and healthy. So know that you're having prayers said for all of you to continue being successful in all your endeavors.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Today, because of after what you see while you're away from your own home, I'm doing a prayer of we give thanks. Moedani la ha'at ha'adonai elohenu vahavotenu. Oh God, we give thanks for there is much to do before we can be content with our world. We give thanks for your creation, for sun and moon, for sea and sky. Thanks for all that lives, for all that makes your children happy. But we remember there is much to do before we can be content. The lost and hungry to be found and fed, the sick and the sad to be healed and cheered, a peaceful world to be built and kept, wrongs to be said right and people to be taught. May we learn, oh God, to make this beautiful world a place of goodness and happiness for all your children. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have a Pledge of Allegiance by John Groff, the U.S. Army.
I pray that we do this through the light of the United States of America and through the Republic of which is fair, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. The Consent Agenda is a means of expediting the consideration of routine matters. If a Commissioner requests that items be removed from the Consent Agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than requests to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the Consent Agenda is not debatable.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt our Consent Agenda, consisting of Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payments for June 21st, 2023 through July 18th, 2023; B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of June 20th, 2023; C, consideration of special commission meeting minutes of June 30th, 2023; D, consideration of administrative adjustments, personal property; E, consideration of applications for property tax abatement, there are two of them; F, acknowledgement of publishing notice of adoption of ordinance number 2023-1235-0, published on Wednesday, July 5th, 2023; and G, consideration of FY 2024 Five County Association of Governments contract with Washington County Council on Aging for Aging and Nutrition Services. And that's my motion.
Second.
Put the motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda, we first have a presentation by the Damaran Valley Fire Special Service District.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Vergey, I'm the county chief of the day. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes of your time to recognize two amazing individuals. On June 9th at 2:00 a.m., there was a vehicle accident at Highway 18, mile marker 13. The initial report... Thank you. The initial report was just a vehicle accident. We had no details. That's when Jaden Darrington arrived on scene and called 911. They reported not only did we have a vehicle accident, but it was on fire with somebody trapped inside. That was the driver. Jaden sprung into action, ran down the embankment to the burning vehicle, and tried to open the door. After the door was opened, he pulled the patient out of the vehicle onto the ground. That's when Sergeant Kilpak arrived on scene. Both men formed a team and were able to carry the patient away from the burning vehicle, out of the brush, into the roadway. Both Jaden and Sergeant Kilpak showed extreme courage on this early morning, and we'd like to recognize them and present them with a life-saving recompensation.
service that they provide for us. Item number two is a presentation from the Children's Justice Center on the VOCA grant.
Thank you.
There's Kristi. Kristi, it's that time of year again.
There we go again. I'm happy to be here to report to you. I think they're going to pull up my presentation for me. This is our semi-annual VOCA grant presentation. So just as a reminder, the Washington County Children's Justice Center... Our mission is to collaborate with multidisciplinary partners to protect each child, advance justice, promote healing, and educate our community. And just to report on what we've done so far this year in 2023, we served 211 primary victims, performed 148 forensic interviews, completed 85 medical exams, completed 51 traumatic stress screeners. The average score was 20.9. Anything over 20 is considered high. Facilitated 86 individual case reviews with our multidisciplinary team. Those numbers put us on track for where we were on a trajectory where we've been. Go ahead, Eric.
Can I just interject a little bit as we go? Can we flip back to that last slide? I'm not sure that everybody understands exactly what the Children's Justice Center does. This is a facility where if a child is the victim of sexual abuse, they're able to be brought in and be interviewed by someone who's trained in helping get the best information out of the kiddo without re-traumatizing the kiddo. So when Kristi says we've done 148 forensic interviews this year, that means we've had 148 different children under the age of 18 come in who have said, hey, someone's touched me or done something to me inappropriately. And of those, and then medical exams, we do those on sites too, where we gather the medical evidence. And the 86 individual case reviews means we think there's enough evidence to continue moving this forward and to take it to the team, which is comprised of law enforcement, prosecutors, and others, as we kind of look at having a comprehensive team, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to see justice be done.
Yep. What he said. Thank you. Okay, so I wanted to... I know the county's on an annual gear budget, but I'm not. I mean, I kind of am, because you are. But most of our money comes from grantors who are on a fiscal year budget that started July 1st. So I wanted to report to you what our budget is looking like for fiscal year '24. And you've heard me talking about what we were seeing coming down the road and what our concerns were, so now we know. So our VOCA award for fiscal year '24 is $254,367, which looks like it's more than it was for fiscal year '23, which is pretty amazing. Actually, a piece of that is for Kane County. We're going to talk later about how Kane County is going to now be a satellite of our Washington County Children's Justice Center. We actually have their county attorney on... Oh, go back. Their county attorney, Rob, and Dyke is here with us today. So when you take out that piece for Kane County, we're actually down a little bit in funding, but we had anticipated 40% cuts. That is what the state saw statewide in their VOCA cuts. We were able to look around the state and identify that a number of Children's Justice Centers were not asking for VOCA funds this time around. It's a difficult grant. It's hard to report on. It's cumbersome, and a lot... And the state was providing other sources of VOCA, what has been VOCA money in the past, for little tiny grants, for little parts and pieces to be covered here and there. And as I looked around, I was like, hmm, there are enough not applying this year. And by, I don't remember if it's law, statute, whatever, rule, a certain amount of this money has to go for child abuse every year. So we decided to ask big. We got big, which is awesome. So I think it's less than 10% down from what we were before, which is awesome, except for that our costs, as you can see, the ground is now solely funding personnel and contracted therapy. Both of those costs have gone up a lot. We were paying $81.25 an hour for therapists. We're now paying $115 an hour for therapists. As you all are very much aware, our money for people just keeps getting more and more expensive. So even though it looks good, it looks a little less good, it is what it is. I think I reported earlier that the state, seeing that VOCA funding was going to be going down, the state provided some ongoing money for victim services, including Children's Justice Centers in the last legislative session. It was $12 million for all victim services. And what that means is that our state award for fiscal year '24, just for Washington County, this does not count Kane County, went from $169,000 to $276,000. So that's significant. Thank you to our legislators. It will help cover our VOCA cuts, our increase in costs, and the loss of our CAMBI grant that expires at the end of this calendar year. And in addition, the state appropriated some one-time funds. We were able to secure $100,000 in one-time money that will help us fill in our holes. So the county and Friends portion of our county's portion and the Friends Board, our 501(c)(3) Boards portion of our operating budget has stayed stable for fiscal year '24. And, you know, both the county and the Friends are working hard on the building. So any questions about any of that funding? I know it's cumbersome and...
Kristi, I just want to add something.
Yeah.
Most people here don't know what a VOCA...
Yeah, VOCA.
...grant means or...
I'll explain, or you want to?
You go ahead, but then I have a commentary.
Okay. Victims of Crime Act. It's federal money. It is money that is paid for in fines and penalties by cases that are prosecuted federally, usually white-collar crime. That fund has been decreasing over the years, and that is why our... And it's set aside for victim services, and you write for grants from that pot of money. Not taxpayer money. It comes from fines and penalties. That amount has been decreasing over the years, which is why our VOCA grants have been decreasing.
So in the four years that I've worked with you, almost five, that has been cut in half. And because of that, I... Blame is a hard word, but it's the fact that judges around the country are allowing people to plead down. They're not incarcerating them. They're not exacting those fees and penalties. And the numbers are falling because, quite frankly, perpetrators of these crimes are not being forced to pay their due share, so that victims are left, again, victims twice, while some of these horrible perpetrators roam free and keep their assets and keep their fancy cars and all these other things that they have. So anyway, that's my political commentary in your otherwise wonderful presentation.
Thank you. Thanks. Any questions or comments on any of the stuff?
No, I just love that the bad guys get to pay for the fees and the penalties to go for them.
Yeah. Okay. And since we were talking about the new building, this is a picture as of today. We've got a big hole.
Great.
Which is awesome, because the city was worried about our weeds. So not anymore. And now I'm going to move into the VOCA report, which I'm required by our VOCA grant to report to you every year. So the numbers I gave you earlier were for the first six months of this calendar year. These numbers are for a fiscal year that just ended, June 30th. So these are full-year numbers. And these are tied to specific goals that we had in our last VOCA grant. The goal for giving information on the criminal justice process was 400. We achieved 837. Referring to medical exams, the goal was 310. We achieved 281. We, I think, referred almost all the kids we saw to medical exams. Are... I think we're down just a scope last year from the year before, so that's probably where that's coming from. Interpreter services, our goal was 100. We achieved 156. Love having a Spanish speaker on staff. It's huge. Individual counseling sessions, this includes both with our in-house therapists and those that we contract out. The goal was 1,250. We achieved 1,126. So we're pretty close there. Emergency financial assistance, this is when a family comes in, they don't have money for groceries, or they just need some kind of emergency... They don't have a crib. They don't have a stroller. They want, you know, some kind of emergency assistance that this family needs. We have a special line item in our VOCA grant that allows us to provide for some of those circumstances. So our goal was 30. We achieved 46. We spent out most of that money. And system obtaining protective or restraining orders, these are really time-consuming. The goal was 15. We did 21. And submitting crime victims reparations applications, this is when victims can apply to the state for reparations for specific things if they've been a victim of a crime. The goal was to help with 45, to help and file with 45 of those. We did 72. Traumatic stress screeners, we talked about these earlier. This is where we screen kids for traumatic stress after they have been a victim of a crime, and also if indicated for suicidality. The goal was 200. We achieved 116. There are some reasons for that. One, we don't screen kids under the age of six. Also, what we were finding, one of the main reasons behind the screening was to make sure that kids get into therapy. And we're finding more and more kids are already in therapy. So that's awesome. So that's actually kind of a win. So I think that might, that's my last line. So any thoughts, questions?
You always need volunteers.
Always need volunteers. Really need volunteers with our Friends Board, helping us with our fundraisers right now. Always looking for donations. We've got a capital campaign underway to raise money for our new building. The county has been super generous with ARPA funds, but we still have some money to raise in our community, and we are definitely looking for partners there.
Can I just echo that one again? I'm just going to say that exactly if you said it again. We are building a new building for our Children's Justice Center so that we have additional space to... You saw some of the wraparound services we provide with the counseling and the medical, and we need a better space for that, and we are fundraising for that. So if anybody's interested in getting involved or in donating money, reach out to the Children's Justice Center, reach out to the Friends of the Washington County, CJC, and we just will be super grateful for anything that comes in to help us with that.
Yeah. We've already got some great partners on board. Love to have our whole community participate in this, because we're taking care of our kids. These are our kids.
Please thank your staff and especially your interviewers, because kids are in already a tender spot, and for the first time, they might be seeing the interviewer as yet another stranger, although many victims aren't strangers to those who abuse them. But thank them for their interviews, their skillfulness, their training, their compassion. We know that that makes it work.
Yes. We'll pass on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. All right, item number three is a longevity award for Dean Wolfenstein. Ron, I'm guessing that's you.
I'm not sure Dean knew that's why he was asked here today.
Dean, you love the spotlight so much. You love... You want to give a speech?
No. He will, just a minute. It's an honor for me to be here to recognize Dean on this longevity award. 15 years is a long time to be doing the job he's doing. There's a lot of responsibility, a lot of worry, a lot of late-night work, a lot of early-morning work, and everything that goes with it. But Dean does his job excellent. He's got a good crew that works with him out there, and he's able to take the very small force of men and do a lot of work around the county, where you have a lot of rural roads we work on in that. Dean and his crew are excellent at taking care of them. So it's always a pleasure for me to be around Dean, because I know when Dean's there, things are going to get done that would need to be done like that. And I've tried to tell him, when we have stuff, he might let me know if I can come out and help him do anything on that. But he's, I don't know, he's trying to tell me I'm in the way or what, but he tells him not to call me unless he wants to. So they go out and do all that, and I don't see a lot of it anymore unless I hear it on the radio or something. But we didn't tell Dean's office purposely, because I knew he wouldn't come if he'd have found out what this was. So we don't have Dean's office here to watch this and that, but I will be sure and tell him about the award. And we're very pleased to have Dean in our department and work hand-in-hand with him with the stuff we do and the stuff he does on the roads too. Not very often seen over here, but he's one of the county's better employees. If we could hire more people like him, we'd have a great workforce. So I appreciate everything you've done on it. Now it's up to you if you want to say something.
We appreciate Dean. Just as an example for the rest of the public, because we know this, but there was a road in the county that I said, hey, it seems like with all the rain from the spring, it's been undercut, and it might be underneath. Can you just stop by and look at it? And Dean texted me pictures that afternoon. It's all taken care of, and the whole... He fixed it all, rebuilt up the things, and the road wasn't... Nobody's going to drive through, and suddenly fall into a big trench. And I was like, dude, I just wanted you to stop by and look and see if it was needed to be handled. And Dean not only looked, but just took care of it right then. So we appreciate it.
Right along those lines. I'm always a little bit nervous when I call Dean, because I don't want him to drop everything and go solve whatever problem I'm calling him about. So I usually like, hey, Dean, you don't need to do this right now, but you know, I got this call on a particular road, and to Commissioner Snow's point, it's always, he gets it done. But the other day, I called him about unlocking a gate down at the landfill, because we were going to let the follow-the-flag people come through. And I said, Dean, I have the keys. I just wanted to double-check a couple things with you. He's like, well, hey, call me if you want me to go do it. So I said, no, Dean, don't worry about it, Saturday morning. And guess what? I got out there at 6:30 in the morning to unlock those gates. And guess what? Those gates were unlocked. You know, and that's just, that's typical Dean for you. You say something, you ask him about anything, he just gets it done. He's absolutely... I don't know what we'd do without you, so appreciate you so much. Appreciate your support.
Well, fantastic. Well, since Dean requested, we take a picture, so. All right, item number four, emergency services report. Sergeant Cashin. I'll talk right into the mic, Sergeant.
Is this a little better?
That's better.
Okay. Afternoon, Commissioners. I have the SAR report for this past month. We had 14 calls, which is down from the month before, which was nice. We have a total of 98 calls so far this year. So we're running on pace between 2020 and 2021 at this point. Had 336 man-hours from SAR members. I'll just briefly go over. We had a missing juvenile on the 20th of June. He was missing along the Virgin River, located fairly quickly. On the 22nd, we had overdue cabers out in Blemington Caves. They apparently got lost down there, but they did find their way out. When we got there, they were just about ready to come out. 22nd, we had an ill hiker in Snow Canyon State Park. On the 30th, we had lost an ill hiker in the Vortex up by Lower Sand Cove. On the 7th, we had a missing swimmer at Sand Hollow. This was a young boy that had been last seen in the water and hadn't been seen for an hour. Luckily, he'd gone over by those reeds down on that south end, and he was over in there. He was fine. We had stranded tubers along the Virgin River near Virgin on the 4th of July. On the 6th, we had lost hikers again in Snow Canyon. They spent about two hours wandering around on the Lapitutes Trail, got off trail and couldn't find their way out. Ill hikers on Pine Valley Mountain on the 8th, that one took a while. They'd apparently been up there half the night and most of the day and got off trail. And one of them was quite ill. On the 8th of July, we had stranded hikers on Canaan Mountain. On the 9th, we had injured and ledge hikers up at Snow Canyon. You getting a theme here? On the 11th, we had a lost motorcyclist in Long Valley area. On the 12th, ill hikers in Snow Canyon. As the heat went up, those calls went up. Overdue hiker in Canaan Mountain on the 15th, and ill hikers on Scout Trail in Snow Canyon on the 16th. So obviously, I was thinking the heat would kind of tamp it down, and it has a little, but the calls we're getting, these people are really ill by the time we get to them. And this isn't enough water to go on a hike, and I don't think you could carry enough right now, so I would advise people not to go right now, or wait till late in the evening or early morning. So any questions on that?
Any injuries with your men and women?
None that they reported to me. They know they're supposed to. None that they reported. I can tell you that DPS's STAR 8 has been a great asset to have here. They have really actually saved a lot of our people, some dangerous types of hiking rescues. So they've been on quite a few of these to help us out. The one guy that was lged out, they came out there, they couldn't hoist, but they came out there and they hauled people and equipment up on top. And once our people got the guy up, they hauled him and all of our people and all of our equipment off of there. So they have been a great asset. So if you talk to any of the guys at DPS or the state, let them know. We really appreciate having them.
We have, and we will continue to do so. It's a great asset.
You bet.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Derek. Item number five, consideration of ratification of purchase requests. Ray from Clerk Officer's Office.
Okay. I'm not as tall as everybody else. Anyway, this ratification, this was for a new dishwasher and the assembly, all the parts, the labor for the Dixie Center. We needed to get this ordered and installed before an event towards the end of August, and it just couldn't wait until it was next, until this baby. They'd apparently been up there half the night and most of the day and got off trail. And one of them was quite ill. On the eighth of July, we had stranded hikers on Canaan Mountain. On the ninth, we had injured ledge hikers up at Snow Canyon. You getting a theme here? On the eleventh, we had a lost motorcyclist in Long Valley area. On the twelfth, ill hikers in Snow Canyon. As the heat went up, those calls went up. Overdue hiker in Canaan Mountain on the fifteenth and ill hikers on Scout Trail in Snow Canyon on the sixteenth. So obviously, I was thinking the heat would kind of tamp it down and it has a little, but the calls we're getting, these people are really ill by the time we get to them. And this isn't enough water to go on a hike and I don't think you could carry enough right now. So I would advise people not, not to go right now or wait till late in the evening or early morning. So any questions on that?
Any injuries with your men and women?
None that they reported to me. They know they're supposed to. None that they reported. I can tell you that DPS's STAR eight has been a great asset to have here. They have really actually saved a lot of our people, some dangerous types of hiking rescues. So they've been on quite a few of these to, to help us out. The one guy that was latched out, they came out there, they couldn't hoist, but they came out there and they hauled people and equipment up on top. And once our people got the guy up, they hauled him and all of our people and all of our equipment off of there. So they have been a great asset. So if you talk to any of the guys at DPS or the state, let them know. We really appreciate having them.
We have and we will continue to do so. It's a great asset.
You bet.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Derek. Item number five, consideration of ratification of purchase requests. Ray from the Clerk of the Office.
Okay. I'm not as tall as everybody else. Anyway, this ratification, this was for a new dishwasher and the assembly, all the parts, the labor for the Dixie Center. We needed to get this ordered and installed before an event towards the end of August and it just couldn't wait until it was next, until this baby. The total of this is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we ratify this purchase. It's been presented for this dishwasher.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Ray. Item number six, consideration of purchase request from Ray. I was gonna say, if it's only one, I know that's not the only thing we had to buy today, so.
Yeah, I got a lot of these. The first few I have here is for the Rose Department, which by the way, Dean is very detailed at. Very much appreciate it. This first one is for a new loader for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They, the company does a trade-in buyback program. So we are trading this in for two hundred and ten thousand dollars, which leaves us a ten thousand dollar total.
Ten thousand dollars, Dean, to use a tool for two years? That's pretty good.
The next one is for Spec Road Base for the new Harmony, the new, the new Harmony pavement. This is for fourteen thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and two cents. The next one is for three, three eighths inch and three quarter inch chip seals. This is for the, the summer chipping projects. This is for a total of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. By the way, the chip sale projects are Old Highway ninety-one in Ventura, Old Highway ninety-one in Leeds, Silver Reef, Silver Valley, Old Highway ninety-one in Harrisburg, Cottonwood Springs, Winchester Hills and the Diamond Valley area roads. This next one is the oil for the chipping projects. It is estimated that we will receive two hundred and fifty thousand from the specially funded Transportation Special Service District. But for now, we are, but the total cost is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. The next one is also oil for the chipping projects. This is a specialty oil for the dirt roads that are being newly chipped for the first time. This is seventy-one thousand, four hundred dollars. The next one is for a replacement vehicle for the Rose Department. This is for a twenty twenty-three F three fifty four by four. This is for seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Next one is also a replacement vehicle for the Rose Department. This is for a twenty twenty-three Dodge Ram Trud four by four. This is for seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And on to the tourism requisitions. The first one is for a tourism conference opening reception at Big Shots Golf. This is for twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents. The next one is for Visa View Traveler Data Subscription. This is for fifteen thousand dollars. This is a program where Visa submits travel data to our tourism office. The next few are for Legacy Park. This first one is for a water truck repair. Unfortunately, it was an extensive repair, so it was twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. The next one is for a stall barn. This is to replace barn F for seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. But the bits and pieces that can be reused, we are reusing to repair other barns such as the bars, doors, whatever needs to be, whatever they can scrounge up that we're going to reuse. They're also keeping the tack and feed rooms that are on the ends, so it's not a complete replacement. The next one is the installation of that stall barn for thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The next one is for replacement panels in the indoor arena. This is forty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. The current ones are starting to rot at the bottom. No longer stable. The next one is for the Sheriff's Office. This is for a specialty vehicle. This is not actually coming out of this year's budget. It's planned for next year, but we need to get it ordered. It takes a year of build. So it's actually going into the twenty twenty-four budget for three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. The next one is for the Dixie Center. This is replacement cameras for the cameras and software that are no longer supported. And an interesting fact is we don't need as many because it's a better program. So and then this is a cost of ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-one cents. And the final one is two replacement vehicles for a motor pool. This is for two twenty twenty-three Ford F-150s, trading in two twenty twenty-two Ford F-150s for a total of three thousand, six hundred dollars. This is on our food program. And unless there's any questions, that is all.
Thank you, Ray. I move, Chair, that we approve item number six, the consideration of purchase requests as Ray has presented.
I'll second that motion. Mr. Chairman?
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ray.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, just remind the public that all of these are budgeted items. We're just approving them through.
Yep. And most of those are, a lot of those are paid in the tourism dollars, which is always better. Item number seven is consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-three twelve thirty-six dash oh, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code modifying various Title X zoning regulations, specifically short-term rental provisions, revising enforcement provisions and other miscellaneous changes to County Code ten thirteen twenty-three. Scott Messel from the Community Development Department.
Yes, Commissioners, land use is a very complicated subject. You know, in the hundred-plus years, our country has been using, or we've more commonly been using zoning and land use regulations. You know, you don't need a, to have a regulation on a forty-foot tall fence until someone builds a forty-foot tall fence to block the view of their neighbors, hoping to buy their neighbor's property out. We, property rights is very complicated. And what we've had, we were here approximately eighteen months ago, working on making adjustments to our short-term rental ordinance and trying to come up with more guidelines and trying, again, to find the balance of property rights, both of those that own short-term rentals and the neighbors that live around them and may be impacted by the activities that take place at those. So one of the challenges that we, we've run into, we've used the, the term that our land use ordinances are, are fluid and they're living documents and so adjustments need to be made. And what we found with the previously approved ordinances is that they, there was some vagueness to them that it, it left room for interpretation, both from those that were upset about the impacts that a short-term rental would have on them and also by those that own the short-term rentals in response to possible complaints that were about their property. And so we've had some bad actors and some property owners. We have, we have quite a few property owners or short-term rental owners that are good neighbors, but we have some that the impacts are affecting the property rights of the neighbors around them. We had, we've been talking with the Planning Commission and staff through numerous meetings. We had two public hearings and a work meeting and two regularly scheduled meetings. And staff, both Victoria and I and other members of my staff, met with both property owners and adjoining neighbors. And we have listened, spent many hours in meetings, listening to concerns and questions and also answers. And we have tried to address concerns and try to find a balance, trying to give our ordinance more teeth so that it is more clear when there truly is a violation and what really is the impact and still allowing those that own short-term rentals to, to operate them. But we also, you know, we didn't, we didn't have a square footage maximum on an accessory dwelling unit until we had ten thousand square foot accessory dwelling units being constructed in the same property as a ten thousand square foot home. So we, some of the things that we ended up doing is we went through and we adjusted the occupancy. We have places that maybe they are a five-bedroom home, but they have a lot of large common space. And we, so we have limited occupancy to the number of four per bedroom. Some of the other items that we have addressed is the number of short-term rentals in a neighborhood. Now, on the side, we, we do have the PDSTR zone and so subdivisions, a developer could come in and propose a subdivision that is strictly for short-term rentals. We have examples of those throughout the county. And our, our current ordinance permits that and we're not making any changes to that. What we are trying to find a balance with is the existing short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods and how they impact the neighborhood. So we have added a density on the number of lots that a short-term rental or that could have short-term rentals in a subdivision and that density is ten percent. We have added language that, you know, one of our big concerns is health, safety and welfare. And so we've added on line one thirty-four, if a short-term rental is in, is serviced by a fire special service district that requires its proof of a yearly fire inspection and compliance with its requirements for STRs with occupancy of more than ten guests, then they need to meet that with their renewal. We have tried to, you know, the complaints and the issues that we seem to really have is the amount of trash, the amount of vehicles, the noise and having parties, you know, everyone has, and we've talked about this at great length in Planning Commission meetings, is, you know, having, those that own a home, you know, Eric may have a wedding reception for his daughter at, or one of his kids at his home, but that's not something that would be happening every weekend. And you, you know, as neighbors, you can expect that maybe your neighbor may have one or two in the lifetime that they're living in the home may have a wedding. But when you have a short-term rental property that can be used for wedding reception or wedding or large events every weekend, it's more appropriate for that to happen in a commercially zoned area and in a reception center. And so we also, as we looked at some of the complaints that we'd been getting, we came up with, well, we better define what a party is and, you know, we, food trucks, people coming that aren't staying, there aren't registered guests at the structure or at the short-term rental, the amount of noise, disc jockeys, portable PA systems, outdoor movie screens, food trucks and such. And so we better define that. We've better define quiet time, lighting and sound systems. And we created what we called a hybrid violation and violations. We just tried to clearly outline what we had in our code before that a license could be revoked if it was the three strikes and you're out. But we didn't really have a timeframe. And, you know, we had property owners or we had short-term rental owners saying, look, if I get three strikes in the entire time that I own this property, does that mean I lose my license? And so we put some language in the code. So, you know, you get the three strikes, your license is revoked, but, and then that's for a two-year period of time. And then there is a reset on the violations every five years. We also tried to, in all of our research in our meetings, we tried to look around, see what is being done nationally and throughout our state. As you were, our short-term rentals kind of took everyone by surprise. It would be nice if we could be proactive rather than reactive, but that's where we are today is just trying to find that balance. And I can go into more detail or answering questions you may have, but the Planning Commission, after their last public hearing unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance. It's before you now.
Very good. Scott, you have had two public hearings on this?
Correct, yes. And numerous meetings with both neighbors and owners of short-term rentals.
I understand this is a negotiation. The property owners had a fair amount of say and those that are renting the short-term, I mean, they, they came and a lot of this language reflects their.
Yes, yeah, we, we met with owners of some of the larger short-term rentals. We met with owners of smaller short-term rentals throughout the county and we met with neighbors, some who were all right with short-term rentals, just had problems with a couple of issues. And, you know, we tried to look at everything fairly and try to find a balance.
So I can say, Chair and Commissioner Iverson, that I was in on all of these meetings and I found the atmosphere that I found promoted by those who already had large or small short-term rentals where that, they didn't live up to the expectations of the neighborhood that eventually it might go away altogether. And even though there would be property rights associated with that and then some longevity and we don't have a favorable ombudsman in the state of Utah right now. But the point being is, is that they were saying, we will acquiesce to some of the requirements that you're giving us so that we can still operate. And legally as well as those that newly apply and they go under a whole different set of rules. But in this country, we've had short-term rentals for two hundred years. They're called hotels. And what happens in neighborhoods when you have hotels move in, that's not a residential flavor anymore. And you start to turn properties into commercial adventures. And that is, adventures for those who hear it, adventures, because they find the effects. When I first, about four years ago, was a Commissioner, one of the first visits I made was to Sky Ranch. And there were several owners out there who met with me and their list of complaints, including the ones that you talked about, noise, trash, parking. They even had a vehicle parked in their driveway and they couldn't get out to go to work and had to go across the street and ask them to move their car so that they could go to work. And the person was very rude. So I thought it was really cute when our neighbors years ago got a cute little puppy until it barked all night. And then I wanted them and the puppy gone. But the point being is, is that we're trying to strike a reasonable pose with this. Victoria's worked hard on it. We've had a lot of input from both those who own short-term rentals and those that are affected by them, as well as the Planning Commission did an excellent job, asked the hard, hard questions of both parties involved, so to speak. We already have approved short-term rentals in Pine Valley and yet Emerson and those in the Planning Department, Community Development get complaints all the time about even the legal ones that should comply and, and nobody can control that. So I, I am in favor of every single word that's here because I've read it over and over and helped work on it with our legal team and planning. So my compliments to you to put this together. I agree with Commissioner Iverson. We'll probably visit this again, but there's nothing to say we can't dial it back or dial it up. But eighteen months ago, we thought we had a pretty good handle on it, but some problems persisted and so we've dialed it up. But if this doesn't work, we'll dial it back down and we'll find something that does. But I know the homeowners that have been ill affected by the noise and congestion and commercialization of what they thought was their peaceful residential neighborhood, they deserve more attention right now. And that's what this, this does.
I'd like to just join Commissioner Almquist and just thank you, Scott, and staff and Victoria for all of the time and attention you've put into it. I mean, I think I and almost all of us would prefer not to have to, you know, get government involved, especially when, when we're talking about neighbors, neighbors. neighborhoods. One of the neighborhoods that was impacted the most, the one out in the Sky Ranch area, I think was really some of the examples that made us act a year or so ago. When suddenly you're talking about homes where entire tour buses were pulling up and dropping off occupants and just really kind of destroying the environment. I think one thing that we're trying to do, or at least that I believe you're trying to do, Scott, in this proposed ordinance is define nuisance. So up to this point, you know, we've been basically telling everybody, you can't be a nuisance to your neighbor. But we haven't really defined what nuisance is. And so I think it's important that we kind of give it a definition. I also think that in reading through it, it seems like we've tried very hard to give due process to people. And so those that might find themselves, you know, with a complaint on their hands, they have a process as well to speak to that or to correct it. And so, I mean, yeah, government overreach is never fun. It's never ideal. But like you said, really what I have a lot of times problems with is a commercial activity happening in a residential zone. And it used to be, a decade ago, when short-term rentals really started, is that we're talking about somebody renting out their, you know, their casita or it was kind of owner occupied. And we're not really talking about that anymore. A lot of times we're talking about LSCs, small corporations that are owning, you know, a number of these. And I think that they're appropriate as long as they don't impact their neighbors. And I'd just like to thank the public that have reached out because a lot of times an issue like this will really drive a lot of different comments. And I just want to compliment the people that have sent emails to me that I've read. It's really been quite measured and quite articulate, like, hey, this is the issue. I understand it. I'm not, I don't want to burn the vacation rental down. I just want them to be good neighbors. And so I kind of appreciate not only the process that you've done, gone through, but also being able to bring both sides together and have a conversation. So.
Scott, I'm going to say I appreciate it as well. This is not an easy thing. So I'll admit, and I'm going to tell you a brief story. When I was in graduate school, my first year of law school, actually, the very first week, they had us, I don't know if Eric or Victoria did this in their schools, but mine did. They had us say, okay, write a law, the simplest law you possibly can. And it was four words, thou shalt not kill, right? And we were like, done, easy law. And they said, okay, so no military? Oh, okay, no, no, the military can't. Anytime? Well, no, not anytime. They can't just walk around and just killing people. So you start to write it out. Well, what about law enforcement? Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, okay, law enforcement is a lot of it. But even then, under certain circumstances, what about self-defense? Yeah, no, self-defense for sure. But anytime? Well, no, only 36 pages to define thou shalt not kill. And that was us being very naive first-year law students, right? I'm going to admit, I don't love parts of this because at first blush, as I read through it, it was like, why on earth can we not just have a thou shalt not kill? And if everybody would just be good operators, right? Then this would work out. But it's not. The lighting ordinance, the number of cars, whether you can, you know, sound systems. There's parts of this I still don't necessarily love now, the density. But unfortunately, if anybody reads through this and they say, you're really, you're going to define how high the pole can be on a light of 12 feet? It's because it's like the details are going into thou shalt not kill, right? If everybody didn't try and get around the rules all the time and if you could just treat a residential neighborhood as a residential neighborhood. And Victoria and I, who's the attorney for everybody else, who's the deputy county attorney who oversees the planning commission and works with him a lot, kind of went, have gone the rounds over and over at various times on this. Because I think that, I think that there should be a place for the lady in my neighborhood who I know has one, or her sister does. And you would never know. She's a great operator. Her sister lives across the street. She doesn't comply with this. And I still want to find a way that a good operator can be a good operator without having to be necessarily owner occupied. But you would never know. I could have my entire neighborhood of those homes because they don't interrupt my life at all. And property rights, because I'm very pro-business, but property rights exist on both sides of the fence. And the person who bought their house, who gets to go in their backyard, I was in a hotel a couple of months ago, and I swear the walls were made of tissue paper because I could hear every single word, like they were in my room, of the four young women in the room next to me talking about why their hairbrush didn't work and the other one was gray. It was so horrible at 2:00 in the morning. And for a resident to have to deal with that every single night from the neighbor down the street with a McMansion that they've turned into a small hotel. I don't, if you read, I guess my point, Scott, is if somebody goes through and reads this and says, how ridiculous. You said when the trash can be picked up and put out? But we've got photos that you've shared with us that somebody who says, well, I'm going to be a good guest. I'm going to take the trash out. And I'm going to leave 17 bags of trash because the Little League team from Alpine came down. And that's how many bags of trash there were in all these cans outside. And it stayed there for four days. Anybody who's put their trash out four days early knows that it doesn't stay there.
Especially in Hurricane.
Especially in Hurricane because it's named Hurricane for a reason. It blows the wind.
Once in a while, not very often.
It's not a commentary on our good friends in Hurricane. But the wind blows, the dog comes and rips open the trash. And guess what? Now you've got trash for, but those guests are gone, right? So some of this may seem government overreach, but it might not be overreach. It might just be government reach, trying to address a problem that we shouldn't have to address if good operators would just be good operators. That said, there are still some, I do have some concerns that even if this is to pass today, I want to come back and address because I think that there are some things that we might still be able to word differently. And I'd like the planning commission to take those up.
Okay. Well said.
Very good. Would you entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion if somebody wanted to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move on item number seven, that we approve ordinance number 2023-1236-0, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code, modifying various Title X zoning regulations, specifically short-term rental provisions, revising enforcement provisions, and other miscellaneous changes to County Code 10-13-23.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Scott, for your work on that and for the planning commission, their unanimous recommendation on that one. Item number eight is the consideration of a resolution, R 2023-3149, a resolution approving the county's participation and support for the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant awarded to Damarin Valley Fire Special Service District. Someone from Damarin here to speak to this.
Kurt Schell, he slipped out. Max Hornson, come on up.
You have two minutes.
I don't need that much time. We have asked the county for some assistance on a $200,000 grant that we have gotten from FEMA to buy a big compressor that I don't know what it does or that it fills diving bottles for the firemen. And they've agreed to do so. And we need some help on it or we'll have to turn it down. So we appreciate you taking the time to meet with us and thank you.
Yeah, fantastic. Just to clarify, the FEMA grant is reimbursement. And so it's my understanding that what will have to happen is the purchases will have to be made. And then FEMA will reimburse you and then you'll reimburse the county. And so there's a variety of items, important items, life-saving items that are needed. And it's not quite 200,000. It's 197,000 is what I have here on the motion. But anyway, we appreciate all that you do up there, Mac.
And they've made a deal where they'll do deposits right back to the county.
Very good. Yes, fantastic. Thank you, Matt.
I will get to see the money. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Matt.
Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R 2023-3149, a resolution approving the county's participation and support for the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant awarded to Damarin Valley Fire Special Service District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number nine is consideration of Resolution R 2023-3150, a resolution approving state contract amendments for services provided by the Washington County Children's Justice Center. Kristi, back at the mic.
I'm back. I'm here. This is our annual state grant. It's attached to the budget that I explained earlier. There are a couple of changes this year around some of our reporting requirements and mental health requirements. We'll handle those. We also, this, we have, in the past, have had two different contracts that you would approve, one for our forensic interviewing program, one for our CJC program. Those have been combined. And we have also added in the Kane County Children's Justice Center. So those are the changes that are in that contract.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move on item number nine that we approve the Resolution R 2023-3150, a resolution approving state contract amendments for services provided by the Washington County Children's Justice Center.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Kristi, for item number 10, a resolution R 2023-3151, approving an interlocal agreement to administer to the Kane County Children's Justice Center.
And I've invited Rob Van Dijk to join me here. He's from Kane County. And I explained a little ahead of time, we will be taking on Kane County as a satellite of Washington County. Anything you want to add, Rob?
We're excited to join forces. We've been operating as a satellite of Iron County Children's Justice Center. And for various reasons, that wasn't applicable any longer. And there were lots of options available to us and this was definitely the best one. And so we're excited to work with you as long as you approve this agreement. I've approved it on my end and our county commissioners in Kane County have also approved the agreement.
Sure, thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Yeah, good to see you.
Commissioners, if I can just, this is something Kristi and I went out and visited with Rob and his staff at their center. And this is something we're supportive of. We think that we can, they do good work out there. They just need some kind of logistical support and we can take that along with minimal extra work on our part.
Just for the public's information, we do a lot of things in the five counties, helping each other. It helps us with economy at scale. And of course, Kane County is our favorite neighbor, next to Iron County, if anybody from Iron County is listening.
And Beaver and Garfield.
Well, they're technically our neighbors over the top, over the fence. But anyway, we do appreciate Kane County. So.
I should clarify also that the state is giving us some additional funding to take this on.
Fantastic. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R 2023-3151, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement to administer the Kane County Children's Justice Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you both.
You will have to tell the Kane County Commissioners the next time we're there, we expect escrow marks. Item number 11 is consideration of Resolution R 2023-3152, a resolution approving an independent contractor agreement for film industry market research and consulting. Jamie from our tourism department.
Hi, Commissioners. So this is, our office has contracted with Kristi Grayson to complete an economic impact study on film in Utah. The study will focus in on the horizon specifically and will stay specific to Washington County. The economic impact study is endorsed by Utah Tech and the funding will help us determine our future budgets and plan future film incentives.
Basically, this is more information to help us
Exactly.
determine where to best invest and focus our efforts.
Exactly.
Jamie, I think it's not news to you, but it might be to everybody else. But next year, 2024, marks the 100-year anniversary of film in Utah and especially Southern Utah. So in that century tradition, we want to make an emphasis that film is back in Southern Utah. And thanks to your office willing to show the component of film with tourism is a wise move. So. I don't know if it's much to make a motion. Do we take turns? All right, well, I'll move that we approve Resolution R 2023-3152, a resolution approving an independent contractor agreement for film industry market research and consulting.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number 12, Commissioner here, is consideration of Resolution R 2023-3153, a resolution approving TRT funding for architectural services for the Dixie Convention Center Master Plan. For public's notice, TRT, reminder, there's transit room taxis, heads and beds from hotels.
Right. This proposal is for a Dixie Center master plan to review the existing space, evaluate future space needs, provide possible expansion options, and approximate costs for proposed expansion. It's an overall plan for what we have, what we need, and the phases necessary to get there.
And initially, about three years ago, when we saw the need, as we had others coming and saying, your DIXI Center isn't big enough or the hallway isn't this way or the kitchen isn't that way or something, there was a proposal put out that is twice as much money as this contract. And I think we get a better product for half of, half the money. So.
Yeah, this is actually very muted as we look at both the current facility as it exists. I know Brittany hates me to say this. I always warn that we don't want it to start to look like an aging casino. And so we actually need to renovate it. Some people might be surprised to hear or happy to hear that we have paid off all the bonds on the existing Dixie Center. But we've also outgrown a lot of our bigger conferences. And so the demand continues to grow. And so we need to kind of evaluate not only our current facility and maybe the upgrades that we need, but also look to the future and how a possible remodel would look and what the feasibility would look like. So I think it is a needed expenditure. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R 2023-3153, a resolution approving TRT funding for architectural services for the Dixie Center Master Plan. And that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Jamie. Item number 13 is consideration of Resolution R 2023-3154, a resolution approving the execution of an interlocal agreement governing the use of the Washington County Justice Court by Tokerville City, Utah. County Attorney Eric Clark.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So it seems like every once in a while, something comes across our desk. Something comes across our desk and we think, oh, we missed that? So to my knowledge, every municipality except for Tokerville in our county that uses the Washington County Justice Court has an agreement in place with us. Their agreement just kind of lays out what, like, how the revenue split on the fines to come in and how the services are provided. We realized that we didn't have one in Tokerville. And so this just brings them in line with everybody else.
Great. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution R 2023-3154, approving the execution of an interlocal agreement governing the use of the Washington County Justice Court by Tokerville City, Utah.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number 14 is consideration of Resolution R 2023-3155, a resolution approving a lease agreement for law enforcement. Full motion.
Commissioners, a few months ago, we had a law enforcement agency reach out to us and ask us if we had any space to lease. We happen to have our old administration building that we currently have standing and allow them to utilize some. Sorry. We have some additional space in that building and another law enforcement agency has reached out and asked if they could also lease some space in that building. So this resolution in front of you today is to hopefully have you consider additional leased space to another law enforcement agency in the old administration building.
Very good. It's pretty straightforward. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R 2023-3155, a resolution approving a lease agreement for law enforcement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number 15 is consideration of Resolution R 2023-3156, a resolution to participate in the review process required to request public access to the west side of Gunlock Reservoir across BLM property. Commissioner Iverson.
Well, it's just pretty, um, this is actually a fairly standard practice as far as the county goes, is, is participating as a cooperating agency in, in certain land management issues. Uh, this is one that will be participating as far as working to gain access, um, out around the Gunlock Reservoir area. And so I don't know if there's any questions, but it's pretty simple. We just need to be at the table, and it'd be an asset for the county.
Make sure our citizens' voices are heard. That gives us a, a chance to talk to the people.
Yeah. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution, R dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one fifty-six, a resolution to participate in the review process required to request public access to the west side of Gunlock Reservoir across BLM property.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The last item for consideration is resolution R twenty twenty-three thirty-one fifty-seven, a resolution approving the placement of George, of the George Washington statue at the north entrance of the administration building. Commissioner Alquist.
Well, I think everyone knows that Washington County was named after the first president of the United States, George Washington. And it only became fitting that while a nonprofit corporation, United We Pledge, is in the process of building what they call Liberty Village, that that statue, which was donated together with the molds by the creator to United We Pledge, doesn't have a home quite yet. And so because of that, we offered our space, which if you exit to the northeast when you leave, you'll see on your right-hand side, this depiction of George Washington fighting against the tyranny of the day and saying, you know, never give up, never turn around. And it's, it's fitting that it should have a home where it's safe and not tucked away like the Ark of the Covenant in a New Jersey warehouse somewhere.
So do you know where that ark is?
Uh, yeah, it's in New Jersey.
I'm curious.
Yeah. Well, ask Harrison Ford. He knows where it is. Um, but having said that, it's also a symbol of what our county is standing for, and that is what our first president fought for as far as liberty and, and fighting against tyranny, as he did, and the miracles associated there with. So basically, this motion that I'm about to make houses that here until they're ready for it. They ensure it. But we have pledged that we'll do our best to take care of it, light it, and make sure it doesn't get abused. But please take notice of it, and, and, and we're honored to have it here as long as we get to keep it.
You know, it's kind of the final thing as far as the Liberty Week that we just had. It was actually quite moving to see the crane lifting it off the trailer and putting it in the place. I'm actually glad we're doing this resolution, but I don't know what'll happen if we don't approve it, because I don't think any of us are gonna go move it anywhere. But it is kind of heavy, but it was, it was a lot of fun to see that put into place.
It was, it was fun. By the way, thirteen thousand plus people came through to see the blueprints of history, which Glenn Beck brought here, his collection, first time in that quantity that those items from that collection, which he says only represent about one percent of all the things that he has that depict American history, and quite frankly, our traditions and what makes this country. But, um, and I'll say one last thing, just because I have the floor, and I guess I can. You know, we have George Washington, the elder statesman, sitting on the bench out here. So it depends on what mood you're in when you come to do county business. If you're kind of fired up, you can come in the door past the stand your ground monument. Or if you're, you know, getting a marriage license or something good in your life, you can come through the door with the more peaceful George Washington. And we, we talked to the man who transported it down here from northern Utah, uh, with his wife, and there was no way to really put a tarp around it or anything. So right out in the open for three hundred and forty miles on this trailer was George Washington riding his horse. He said the people that were driving by and then would slow down and look at them and saying, that is the weirdest thing I've ever seen transported down I-15 or anywhere else for that matter. But, um, it, it was really quite comical for him to watch the people and their response to it. And, and kind of, I wanted to say, well, go on tour, you know? Get around the entire country because they need to know that George Washington is a statue we will not tear down.
Well, if you look at it, it's really based on the Battle of Princeton.
Yeah.
And this idea of stand your ground, which was the order that George Washington gave to his troops as they were caving at that moment. So unlike a lot of statues, it's very much an action statue. So his mouth is open, yelling, his hands extended.
If you haven't seen it, you should. Make sure you go out that door, not this one here. Um, we did get a picture as it was being set, and I happened to be standing right underneath his hand, which looks like he's blessing me. But, um, I will take the blessing from George Washington any day. But, uh, it, it also goes, the reason why we wanted it here is that it goes right hand in hand with America's County, the proclamation that we made last commission meeting, that if you want to know what freedom and, and liberty still look like, you need to look at Washington County. And, and, uh, and we will always fight to maintain those freedoms. We do our very best to do that. And George Washington yelling stand your ground is something that we need people across this country to, to remember as their freedoms are being eroded, uh, one by one. So, uh, we did mention to the founders of United We Pledge, who own the statue, that they can maybe look for a new one, because maybe it just will stay here. Um, we just won't give it back. And, and they, they didn't, they, they didn't like, um, they, they didn't find the people that I did. So anyway, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move that we consider for approval, resolution number R twenty twenty-three thirty-one fifty-seven, a resolution approving the placement of George Washington statue at the north entrance of the administration building.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
A motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, that concludes our, our business agenda. We now move to the public comment period, where we have, uh, one comment per verse, and a maximum of two minutes per comment. And we just take them in the order of how they signed up. So we will start with, uh, when the timer goes off, if, if you're still speaking, we'd love to have you make an appointment. We'll come, hear the rest of what you need to say. This is obviously not the only venue to, to have your concerns or, or things be heard. We can, we have met with many, many people in many hours. So, uh, we continue to do so. Ron Whitehead is our first, speaking about roads. But also, while, while Ron comes up, we like to hear comments of things that we actually have the ability to do something about. Roads is one of those. If it's a county road, it's a city road wrong, we don't want to.
Roads is one, and Washington County does a really good job on the roads. Uh, you heard the little spiel on the news maybe yesterday about all the problems they've had with the roads, uh, breaking and thrusting up, and causes a lot of traffic delays and stuff up there. We don't have that because we deal with asphalt roads specifically rather than the concrete roads. So we, we have a lot of stuff we, we work on right now. We're finishing cleaning up the flooding. Uh, there's four sites along the Santa Clara River. We're finishing up Metacwa, uh, Manganese, behind Gunlock, over the river there, and then up to the, uh, road that turns off and goes up to General Stadium. We're fixing that, too. While we're finishing up that, we've been hauling chips to the areas we're going to be doing our normal maintenance on, trying to stay caught up on that. We do have, uh, I believe at least one area we're building new paved roads this year. We didn't get the five miles we'd hoped for because we had so much cleanup to do. But we're, we're rebuilding some of the roads between Hart Surfs and then Silver Valley Estates. There's some roads up there that aren't hard surface, so we'll be doing that. You heard the other roads from Ray that we'll be working on, and they're hauling chips to those right now. We're trying to get all the chips out in place. Little behind on some of our, uh, stockpiles that we needed to get in, not only the oil, but the chips. And so we're, we're on course now to get that. So we'll be working on this throughout August, and we finish hopefully the end of August, if it is through a little sooner. So if you have any questions on that, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't make it long enough to give an appointment. Is that what you're telling?
Turns out people like to not have problems. So.
All right.
Destroy their vehicles. Thank you very much for that. Next is, uh, she, Shailin, I didn't, it's not Shailin, no. Shailin, come on up in. Tell us how, we, tell, for Commissioner Alquist and Iverson, tell them how your name should be pronounced. It's bad because she's in my, just down the street.
I never should have brought it up because now it's a whole big thing. Shailin. The emphasis is on the Lin, Shailin. Okay. A few weeks ago, you read a proclamation calling us America's County. And while I'm grateful that you desire to be a light and example to other counties, the words felt hollow. Wouldn't America's County have a government that is of, by, and for the people? We've asked you repeatedly to improve the policies of public access, public comment, and noticing, but instead they're getting worse. Instead, we're being silenced. Since April fourth, we've not been allowed to speak. That's over an entire quarter of a year. You said that you had important meetings, but the truth is, we're only allowed twenty minutes to comment. It's hard to imagine that you couldn't work around forty minutes in an entire month. But even if that was legitimate, here's what I have experienced when I am allowed to speak. I've stood up here and watched you roll your eyes at me, watched you smirk and laugh derisively. Collectively, I've been called a liar, I'm not saying by all three of you, misinformed, uneducated, a sore loser, and my personal favorite on the payroll of George Soros. Is that what America's County would look like? We've also shared repeatedly with you the threats that exist to voting in elections. We've asked to meet with all three of you, which you've declined, although I do appreciate that Adam has been willing to meet. We've provided you detailed information on vulnerable, our vulnerability of elections, along with needed solutions, much of which can be found at SouthernUtahsForTransparency.com. But overall, your response seems to be to belittle and silence those who have concerns. The point is, George Washington, the namesake of, of our county, and countless divinely inspired heroes suffered much and gave their lives for this nation to preserve our rights, including the right to speak and the right to vote. Would the founding fathers be proud of the way we're running America's County? Would they approve of people's voices being silenced? Would they approve of the county's vulnerable election tabulators, or the county discouraging city officials from doing hand counts, or the county's meaningless post-election audits that have been incapable of validating election results for over fifteen years, and the other election issues that we have? I have a couple lines left. When it comes to securing our elections or restoring public trust, would those patriots consider your efforts sufficient? Would they approve the policies in place? I say absolutely not. We can and must do better. We need to improve our public policies and truly secure our elections through hand counts and canvassing, and that is how we become America's County and preserve the liberties that countless patriots have died for. Thank you.
Next is Jordan Rush. I've not seen Jordan come in. All right. Wendy Gotluzy.
With the congressional election coming up, I'll remind you that for decades, dozens of cyber and national security experts have warned that our elections are not secure. So I continue to ask you, have you found any qualified experts who disagree? Have you found even one yet? Many nations have already returned to hand counts, along with over a dozen U.S. counties, but not Washington County. We're still vulnerable to outside interference, and our races for U.S. Senate and House are high value targets. We're all aware of South American countries who've been brought to ruin with just one election. The stakes are high in 2024, so it's urgent that you implement our recommendations this September. First, actual canvassing to check for ballot stuffing, and second, hand counting to prevent digital manipulation. Many are spreading disinformation about the accuracy of hand counts, but have you looked up their sources or researched their studies? Machines have error rates too, did you know? Have you compared error rates for machines versus hand counts? The difference is minuscule, zero point zero 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 five. The real difference is this, the scale for possible error in a machine count is drastically greater than the scale for possible error in a hand count. Every documented study of a read-and-mark hand count I've found has been ninety-nine to a hundred percent accurate. I can't even find one that was off by more than one percent, but I have found plenty of examples of machine counts that have been off by twenty percent and much more. Over seventy counties with huge problems are listed on our website at SouthernUtahsForTransparency.com. Look them up. All things considered, hand counting is more accurate than machines, which cannot be secured. We call on county officials to begin hand counting this September, and to also accommodate any city that chooses to hand count. Hand counts are needed, and don't be tricked into thinking you can secure elections by wasting more time, money, and trust with Band-Aid audits. We invited you multiple times to speak last week with a national security expert. None of you joined us. Will you listen to his recording at least? Colonel Smith addressed crucial topics you needed to hear, why our pre-election testing is a sham, why our signature reviews are a sham, why our post-election audits are a sham, and he covered problems with risk-limiting audit, which you guys are considering. The time to act is now. I want to thank Ryan Sullivan for meeting with us two weeks ago. Thank you, Ryan. Thanks to Chairman Snow for seeking our input last week. We're looking forward to hearing back from both of you as soon as possible. We also asked for a meeting with all four of you. I'll take you up on your offer. But I'm frankly, after having tried, I invite you to three things this year, and, and Adam and Victor came to one, but not the other two. Gil, you haven't come to either. You haven't responded to my emails for a year. Uh, you guys need to step up, and I'm, I'm tired of setting up meetings that you don't come to, so I'm going to put the ball in your park. You guys, the four of you, pick a time that, that you can sit down with me and talk about hand counting. I encourage you to let me know when we can do that. Um, it's time to show the rest of the state how to secure elections and restore public trust before it's too late. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up. Next up is Steve Kemp.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My first time, uh, addressing you here at the new county building, a beautiful building. Well done. Um, I've, I'm speaking today on economic opportunity or economic development, and my age has forced me to go with these. Words like economic development and economic, economic opportunity are often thrown around by public officials and politicians, and wannabe politicians sometimes, when discussing the ways the public sector can create financial benefit for the community. The truth is, economic development within any community is a long-term, ongoing process that will always be constantly evolving. Please indulge me for a quick timeline over the roughly last hundred and twenty-five years to illustrate my point. Prior to nineteen hundred, Washington County was primarily a farming and ranching community and economy. In nineteen twenty-six, the roadway, known as the Arrowhead Trail or the Arrowhead Trail Highway, officially became part of the numbered highway system and was renamed US ninety-one, providing a reliable road from Salt Lake City to Southern California. The communities along US ninety-one, including Washington County, responded with gas stations, restaurants, hotels, or motels to service this traveling public. We were a stop on the way to somewhere else during this, this time. But it was economic development to a point. In nineteen sixty-four, the St. George Chamber of Commerce Golf Course Committee began the feasibility studies and fundraising process, which led to the St. George City Council voting to approve the construction of the Dixie Red Hills Golf Course on August third, nineteen sixty-four. The course opened for play in nineteen sixty-five. Other private and public courses followed, and the Washington County, and Washington County became a destination for recreation and vacation unto itself, as opposed to on a stop on the way to somewhere else. In nineteen seventy, the completion of the I-15 federal interstate highway, excuse me, and widespread use of indoor air conditioning made Washington County easier to access and a more desirable location to vacation year-rounds. In nineteen ninety-six, the Washington County Economic Development Council was formed as a private-public partnership to bring value-added companies to Washington County. The industrial projects like Fort Pierce Industrial Park on the south end of St. George, and the area commonly known as the Gateway Commercial Center near I-15 in Hurricane, Utah, was the primary locations for many of these manufacturing and distribution businesses, adding diversification to our local economy. This organization was also instrumental in bringing a second fiber optic line into the county via Metacwa, opening the ability for this market to offer true double redundant fiber, high-speed internet service. Operations of this group effectively ceased in about twenty twenty. In twenty eleven, the St. George Regional Airport opened, uh, offering the potential for direct commercial jet access throughout the western United States and connections worldwide. In twenty seventeen, an RFQ is done, put out by St. George City, officially beginning the process of a large-scale development on the hill now known as Tech Ridge. Independent studies showed that this project will have potential to add thousands of high-paying jobs and bring in billions of dollars to the local economy.
How much longer?
Five, ten seconds.
Okay.
I know I've gone less than the people before me. Twenty twenty-three, seeing a need to push economic development, Washington County hires Darren Prince as the Economic Development Director, tasked with helping to promote organic growth within the local economy. As you can see, each of these events have built in some way on the events that happened prior to it. May we continue to do the same thing for the benefit of our community now and in the future. I thank you for your service to our community.
Next, we have April Pinkston.
Good aft- excuse me. Good afternoon, gentlemen. You know who I am and what I represent. We, our group is now almost five hundred people. And, um, John Adams said, "Our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate for the government of any other." Our founders knew God, and they sought his face and prayed for guidance and wisdom. They desired to have a godly foundation for this nation, and they expected us to live according to biblical principles. If we lived according to biblical principles, we would have very little need of government overreach. Okay, I want to present this book, The Founder's Speech to a Nation in Crisis. I gave you, Adam, a copy, because this right here will tell you so much, because if you pick up the Constitution and you read it, you're not going to fully understand the heart and mind of the men behind it. the heart and mind of the men behind it. Okay? Books like this and The Light and the Glory, The Federalist Papers, and Rediscovering God in America will open your eyes to how far off you are in following the Constitution and our founder's heart. Now, I gave this book to you, Adam, because I actually have hope for you. Even after all of our, our problems, I have a lot of hope for you, and when I found out why you did not run for Christie Stewart's spot, you shot up a thousand points in my eyes. Okay? Because your first job is to be a father, and I applaud you for that. Okay, now, I already said, I'm, I'm sorry, I got my papers all messed up, but I just think if you understood, you read this book and you understand the founders, then maybe it's not too late to turn this ship around. Because we do claim to be America's County. We do claim to be named after Washington, and it's just so important. Our founding fathers would not have tolerated, would not have tolerated you turning down the hand count. They would not have tolerated you having meetings when the taxpayers can't attend. They would not have tolerated property taxes. The pursuit of happiness refers to property ownership without government intervention, referring to taxes. And on that, I will just say, our founders loved God, and they, they called Him the sovereign author of this country. They were willing to die to be free and to give us freedoms such as the world has never known, freedoms which you guys are taking away. And I don't believe that it's intentional. I believe it's because you just don't know. Okay? And it's not too late to turn around. And Washington County is a light on a hill, and I was gonna play a clip by Ronald Reagan, but I know that I'm over time. And he was talking to two Cubans, and they were saying that what a great opportunity they had, and then two Americans said, "We don't know how lucky we are." And the Cuban said, "You think you're lucky? I at least had somewhere to run. This is the last place. We don't have any place else to run." So gentlemen, I, I encourage you to read that book, get the other books that I've suggested, understand our founder's heart, and turn it around. And I pray sincerely that you will ask God to give you a heart of flesh and remove your heart of stone and listen to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Bruce Bennett.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of Steve. Beautiful building, first time in the chamber. I have a feeling of all the people here I'm looking at, one person in particular made the stylistic choices, so my congratulations.
It wasn't me.
Yeah. So I have two minutes. The first minute, I'll give you an update on the project that we're working on, South Main. Many of you know that we secured a forty-year lease with the city of St. George. Contrary to some public opinion, we didn't, we're not given the land. We are just improving the two acres parcel on South Main, and we are well underway with the design of what should be the crown jewel of our downtown area, beautiful new performing arts center there. It is a unique project and in, in the scope of being a city, a combination of city, state, county, and private citizenry, raising the money with no tax burden on the local community, which we're very, very proud of. We estimate it to be about a thirteen million dollar project, a theater in the round seating approximately three hundred and seventy-five seats. Some local historians have told me this will be the first brand-new community-centered theater built in the city of St. George since eighteen seventy-five, when the Opera House was finished, the, the facility that we are now using and have used for the last nine years. The current, current production is Footloose, the musical, you should all go see it. It's our sixtieth production since twenty fourteen in that facility. We're also very excited to announce, we just inked a contract to repurpose the old Main Street Cinema Building just across the street from the new building, and we hope that repurposing this building will also provide a whole host of community activities, including youth presentations, youth camps, well-needed, much-needed rehearsal spaces for all types of arts organizations. We'll be the landlord and we'll open it up and be a good landlord and make very affordable rates because there isn't enough of that here in town available. So we're very, very excited about that. It just was too good of an opportunity right across the street from the new theater, so we're excited about doing that. The big picture, and we're very ambitious people by nature, is that we hope within two years, you'll see a complete reinvigoration of that South Main area. And what we hope to finish with is the, finally, the arts district in the city of St. George and what the county seat of Washington County that we've all longed for. And thank you for everybody's participation and support. It means so much to us, and we hope to change the community forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bruce.
Any questions for us? Any questions?
Not very public comment.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Darren Cox.
First of all, I wanted to state, state that I'm here and I'm present, and I'm standing as a witness today. Utah legislators passed about a dozen, dozen election bills in their general session this year. Will these laws secure our elections? Actually, it looks like some, some of their new laws make things worse. A few minor election problems were fixed, but other fixes may or may not materialize since legislators didn't set important standards themselves. Instead, they unwisely deferred these critical decisions to state groups who have.
God, we need to read these books. Did you last?
Proven to be unreliable.
Our country was founded on God.
For the rest of all the election bills and their problems, go to our website, SouthernUtahsForTransparency.com. Not one bill passed this, this year will end, will end vulnerabilities to tabulator manipulation or ballot stuffing. In fact, not one bill passed this year even set up any standards to meaningfully check tabulator manipulation or ballot stuffing. Worse yet, some bills actually make our elections even less secure. Today is the one-year anniversary of your infamous post-election audit, where many of us realized that the audits were incapable of validating who won. The state even admitted this on page fifty-one of their election review on twelve thirteen twenty-two. It's been a full year now. What has been done to correct this? We have another congressional election coming up in a few weeks, and I still haven't seen any meaningful standards from the state or county in writing. Do you? Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Darren. Next. Next is Ryan Davis.
Hi, I just had a couple of things, talking about government efficiency and involvement. I would like to say thank you to the county commissioners. My son did an Eagle project with the Bearclaw Poppy. It was a combination of county that wants to keep those trails open, working with the BLM, working with other groups. Just wanted to say thank you for working to keep those trails open. I have to admit, I love the return and report. I encourage you guys to continue to do that so that people know what's going on. But again, just wanted to say thank you for working to keep mountain bike trails open.
Thank you. Do we have Jordan Hes? Do we have Jordan Hes? I'd like to note that the meeting, I'll just speak loudly, meetings are rebroadcast daily on TDS cable channels twenty-two and one oh eight at ten, two, and five-thirty. They're also available on demand at youtube.com/communityeducationchannel, and you can also find a lot of information on our county Facebook page, which is Washington County, Washington County, Utah is the Facebook page. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.